We have two members present in the chambers and one on the phone.
All right, Ryan, any changes to the agenda?
There is one change to the agenda, item 7A, which is the Sammons Financial Group preliminary plat and site plan. There was a change in the conditions of approval, and there's a memo on the dais with the updated conditions.
Move approval of the minutes. Excuse me, of the agenda.
Second.
Jim, are you there?
Aye.
Three yes.
All right, item two, citizens forum, which is the time for anyone in the audience to address any ideas not part of the whole hearing. My name is Bob Saxton, 220 South 27th Street, West Des Moines. And the reason I'm here is we've had an incident, a couple of incidents that have happened around our area. There's a, I call it a bike trail that runs parallel to EP 2 Parkway, runs right in front of 27th Street, 29th Street, all along there. About six weeks ago, my wife was pulling out. She pulled him back from the stop sign on 26th Street, South 26th Street. She's gonna make a right-hand turn, bicyclist comes down, she's pulling in, you know, away from the stop sign so she can see what's coming, a lot of cars coming, a lot of traffic. Bicyclist comes up, bangs into the side of the car door, starts beating on the window. Didn't like that. We've had several incidents like that happen in the past. Most recently, my sister-in-law had a couple of kids in a van, did the same thing, traffic was coming, she pulls out to ease her way out so she could see the traffic coming back and forth, guy starts beating on the hood of her van to move. I had it happen the other day, myself. I started pulling out so I could see the traffic coming, guy comes up, he wasn't gonna stop, he's gonna run right into my car. So I guess what I'm asking everybody is, I've lived in different places in the United States, I was an executive with the Postal Service, and out in California, Phoenix, places like that, they actually have stop signs for bike paths to stop at different intersections. And I'm proposing the same way, the same thing. I think it's about time that we do something there. I had reported one incident to the police department, and they suggested that I come and address all you folks here tonight. So I'm just putting that out on the table, I'm just afraid somebody's gonna get hurt. Because I'll be honest about it, if somebody goes after my wife, I'm gonna go after them. But it's become a real problem, I've talked to some of the neighbors, and you know, it's one of these deals that, well, yeah, you know, that happened to me one time. And the more you talk about it, the more you hear about it. So, but it's getting real bad, it's not, it's not the family-type bicyclists, it's the hardcore ones. For, I mean, you can see they're training for ragby, and they don't want to stop. But you know, the parents with kids, they stop, they're very polite and everything, but the other ones don't. But I guarantee you, somebody is gonna get hurt.
We have 58 miles of pink bike trail, so, you know, we can obviously...
No, I get that, but there's a lot of traffic that goes in and out of those side streets. By the railroad tracks, and so on and so forth. But you have to pull out so you can see the traffic coming, there's no other way around it.
Let me get your contact information, Bob, so I can follow up with...
Sure.
Talk to Public Safety and Supply Committee about that, and if we've got any site triangle issues out there, whatever.
But either a type of yield sign, or...
And we do have stop signs on trails, like I know on...
Oh, absolutely.
Coming out of Ponderosa, we have one on the trail there.
We've got them out in Waki, I've seen them, but...
We need to look into it.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
I hate that TV, is this where we are? Okay. Jan Fleming, 1800 Grand Avenue, number 259. I have a few signatures, there are more coming, but I was doing the art fair this weekend and didn't get around to pick them all up. But we have people signing petitions for, spraying for mosquitoes. I did take it upon myself to call James Ward in Urbendale, they spray. And it, one thing that was really important, he said that they are working with the, the enteology department at the Iowa State University, the sprays now are not harmful to pets and birds. That's what he told me, they've gotten rid of that. So that can't be a complaint anymore. And I know that three of, let's see, Mr. Trevillion, Mr. Trimble, and Ms. Hardman said that they would call some communities to find out about their spraying. So, I don't know if you have a report, but I will be back next week with a whole bunch of these, people who want you to spray.
Yeah, no, and I know, I've done a survey, so how long has this been going on?
We've done a detailed survey of the local communities, and then the communities around the Minneapolis area, since they're, they have a lot of insect issues. And what is the next meeting date, Brett, where are you? For the public services, we're gonna go to the Public Services Committee and present this information, and Brett can actually send you what he has found to date as we speak, so...
And I want to make sure she understands the date and the time of the committee meeting, and I would suggest that she should actually go to the committee meeting, because they're gonna go through all the surveys, reports, and they're gonna make a recommendation to the full council.
Committee meeting? I don't know.
If you don't share your contact information, they will tell you when this meeting is gonna be...
Oh, okay, okay.
And you and whoever you think is wants to be part of the conversation are welcome to go to that committee meeting.
Oh, okay.
Once they're done, we'll make an recommendation to the full council on whether to change the policy.
Okay. I'll go, yes.
Brett will take your information and write out there, and make sure you get that.
And I just want to say too, you know, I thank Jan for, I know she was here last time, she's still here, and I thank Brett for a lot of the work that he's done on the survey. But again, just truly understanding what we're gonna do, and what the survey results say, and what recommendations come from the council, Jan, just keep being engaged in these meetings and letting your voice be heard, it helps, so I appreciate your diligence. There is a detailed survey of a lot of what municipalities are doing, and Brett's team's been working on some of that.
So not to belabor this point, but, so this is gonna be discussed in subcommittee, and then, I mean, will there be like a public hearing, so the opponents of it will have kind of ample due process?
Public notice, right?
Because I think there's gonna be, I think there's gonna be an overwhelming, non-silent majority that comes back against it, so...
After, I guess we could, well, we could see what the recommendation is, and then if we, we could let people know that this will be on discussion for a council to, so other folks could have...
And they can see what the recommendation is, if the subcommittee has passed that we don't recommend any change to the policy, they need to know that, but I would put it under other matters.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, and I would, and I would like to make sure that we understand whether or not the spraying does affect, have a harmful effect on pets and plants, because sometimes we say that it does, and maybe it doesn't, and they've come up with a better solution. So I'd truly like to hear what effects that does have on pets and plants, as it relates to people opposing it.
Yeah, it's kinda like cell phone towers, I mean, people will believe what they're gonna believe, and those are supposedly safe, but some people believe they're not, so...
Absolutely.
Hello? Hi, my name is Rochelle Long, 106 11th Street in West Des Moines. I'm the president and founder of Taste of the Junction, so I'm just here for a couple of reasons. First of all, I want to say thank you to the Human Rights Commission and to Tom Haddon for their support this year. Also, thank you Mayor Steve Gare for your longstanding support, you've been one of my first supporters, and I appreciate your ongoing support. I wouldn't be able to get through this without the help of Ryan, he gets me through all the legal ease, thank you, Ryan, for that. Also want to thank Rene Hardman, she's been very supportive this year, as we're planning our seventh annual festival, and to all the other council members who have supported the Taste of the Junction in the past. I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. We're in full steam ahead, getting ready for the seventh annual festival, I can't even believe that we're doing the seventh annual, but it is gonna take place Labor Day weekend, Friday, August 30th and the 31st. Ryan, did you pass those?
Yep.
Okay, so you have that in front. But I want to publicly invite you to attend and to support the events this year, especially Friday, the Junction Speak, we will be honoring Mr. Frank Duncan, he was a city council member for many years back in the day, so he will be honored this year, we would be honored to have any and all of you there during that presentation. And then also Saturday, the 31st, we'll be back out on the street for the multicultural festival, so we just want to invite you to come to attend and support this year. You can check out more information on Facebook and also on our website for support.
Well, great, thanks for doing this, it's getting bigger and better every year.
It is.
Yeah, awesome.
And I'd just like to add too, a special thank you for the work that is done in putting this together. You know, we just gotta remember, the junction is where we all began, and to get out there and celebrate right at the junction where West Des Moines began is a really good effort to enjoy some fun and fellowship, and so you might want to email Tom, and maybe he can get it out to us, ways in which we can support this. I know that there are some sponsorships and ads, so if you get that to Tom, we can have him send that out to all the mayor, the mayor and all the council people as well, so that there's other ways to support other than just showing up. So if you can send that to Tom, that would be great. But I want to just thank you and your team that puts this together, it's a wonderful, wonderful opportunity to celebrate West Des Moines and the junction and get food and fellowship.
Thank you, it is free and open to the public.
Is that Ed Horton, the basketball player?
Ed Horton, the basketball player, he'll be there.
He was a strong dude.
He'll be on the street.
Yeah, cool.
Thank you so much. Anyone else for citizens forum?
I guess we're all talkative tonight. Jim Miller with the Valley Junction Foundation, 137 Fifth. Just a couple of things to review, I'm fully aware of the GIF law, but there's a stack of books over there if you choose to take one, or anyone chooses to take them, but it's a book called Our Towns, and this couple that wrote it spent three years, this is the job I want, flying around the country, visiting communities and figuring out what makes them tick. They spoke at our national conference, and I'm probably a little biased, but it's a fascinating book. West Des Moines is not featured in it, frankly, no one in Iowa is featured in it, but we talked to them about that. I'm gonna read a very quick section in here, as they said, what we saw and what we learned, and they say these are the 10 and a half signs of success, I'm of course going to read you the downtown section. Number four, they have downtown, this seems obvious, but it is probably the single quickest marker, excuse me, the quickest single marker of the condition of a community. For a young country like the United States, many cities still have good bones. Skipping ahead, the Main Street America Project from the National Trust has coordinated downtown revival projects in over 2,000 communities across the country. Downtown, skipping to another section, downtown ambitions of any sort are a positive sign, but most often occupied second and third floor apartments and condos over restaurants and independent retail stores suggest that the downtown has crossed a decisive threshold and will survive. And of course, I'm talking about Valley Junction. So again, this is a cool book, read it if you would like. And then I just have two other things, if you didn't see and you're not aware, we were selected 12 years ago as one of the original Iowa Great Places, and we submitted for redesignation, and we received that last Thursday, so we will be eligible, that is a five-year designation, and we'll be eligible to apply for project funding up to, I believe, $300,000 or $400,000, and we're still identifying what we might apply for. And that was on Thursday, and then on Friday, we were informed also, we were one of the original cultural and entertainment districts, and we've been recertified as a cultural entertainment district, and that's for 10 years, and there will be funding that we can tap into also. So again, the city obviously is a key partner in all of this, the city led on the Great Places nomination, and we led on the cultural district nomination. So again, thank you all very much, it's great, great, great to have some designations, and we'll, we'll chase the money when we can, so, thanks very much.
Awesome. How is the lighting project coming along since you're here? Any more updates on where we're at with that and your fundraising efforts?
Yes, Rene was asking about what we're calling Light Valley Junction...
Yeah, I'm sorry.
...started originally as replacement of the building trim lights, and has grown to a much larger project, KCL is driving that as our partner. And we have four funding requests out, we know we will be, one of which is to Prairie Meadows, we will be receiving Prairie Meadows money, we don't know the amount yet, but we've been told we're receiving that. Obviously, the city is a key partner, Polk County and some other corporate, once we get through that. Our goal is to have at least phase one of it done for this holiday season, if the funding flows faster, we'll do the whole thing for this holiday season, but probably phase one for this, this holiday season and phase two, phase two for next. But truly, we feel like this will bring more people to Valley Junction than we, than any other project we've done, so it's, stay tuned, so, watch for the lights, so...
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else for citizens forum? Okay, item three, mayor, council, city manager reports. Jim, any city council report?
Those types, Your Honor.
All right, John?
Chamber hosted a luncheon for kind of some of our larger employers in the city, and the mayor spoke at that last week, so I was pleased to get to attend that and hear the update, and that's, I think it's great what Carol Chambers has done with that group, and continuing to get them together to get an update of what's going on in the city. Secondly, last week, I spoke at the West Des Moines 101 class, I think, I think it's called, but that's an initiative that Tom and others have put on to kind of help educate folks within the city, so we have some, some folks that come up within the ranks and can take future leadership positions, which I think is really smart for engagement, and then also for development of our employees, and so it was a, it's a pleasure to get to speak at that as well.
All right, Rene?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I'd like to report that, you know, I had the distinct honor of welcoming World Refugee Day on June 22nd, right here in West Des Moines. It was widely attended, it was a phenomenal event, and it was great to see so many people of diverse backgrounds celebrating their heritage and their culture, you're right, in West Des Moines, while educating us on some of their traditions and whatnot, so it was just really nice to have that kind of a festival celebration right here in our backyard, so, loved it. And so thanks for allowing me to, opportunity to represent you, Mayor, on the World Refugee Day. Also, I think many of us attended the groundbreaking ceremony for Sammons, and it was very, very nice, mayor spoke, and we're all excited to see the construction progress on Sammons, they are great company and glad that they're here in West Des Moines, so I was glad to be able to break away for their celebration and groundbreaking.
Hey, Tom?
Last Monday, the Convention and Visitors Bureau announced a major triathlon that will happen in three consecutive years in the Des Moines and West Des Moines, the part of the bike route will be in West Des Moines, so our staff worked closely with them to make that happen, and that's, it's, I think it brings in a significant amount of people and top-notch, and John said he's now has to compete, so that's what he said. Thanks.
Thanks, Tom.
Item four, consent agenda, are there any items that any council member wants to pull? If not, I take a motion for all...
Move approval.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Three yes. Old Business 5A, Grand Ridge, 1809 South 50th Place, establish the Grand Ridge Plan Unit Development to Preserve Trees and Adjust Bulk Standards, Lowery Company LLC. It's continued from the June 3rd agenda, it's an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption, there are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration.
For a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Aye.
Three yes, norance amending official zoning map in the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019 by amending Title IX Zoning, Chapter IX, Plan Unit Development District pertaining to PUD District Regulations and Guidelines.
Move approval of second reading, waiver of the final, third reading, and adopt in final form.
Second.
Well, first we'll do the approval, approval of second reading.
I'm not usually the motion guy. Move approval of the second reading.
Yep, all right, Rene, you want a second?
Second.
Trying to speed things up.
We appreciate it.
Okay.
Aye.
Three yes.
Move waiver of the third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
All right, please vote. Just getting warmed up, we got a few more.
I know.
Three yes. 5B, Jordan Creek Town Center, northwest corner of South 68th Street and Mill Civic Parkway, amend the Plan Unit Development to Allow SIC Code 7542 Car Washes as a permitted conditional use, GGP Jordan Creek LLC, this again is an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption, there are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration.
Second.
All right, questions or comments?
Aye.
Okay, please vote.
Three yes, norance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019 pertaining to Plan Unit Development District Regulations and Guidelines.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Three yes.
Wave the third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Three yes. 5C, Sammons Financial Group, southwest corner of South 81st Street and Mill Civic Parkway, establish the Sammons Financial Group Plan Unit Development on 39.2 acres, Sammons Financial Group LLC, again, this is an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption, there are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Aye.
Three yes, norance amending the official zoning map in the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2019 by amending Title IX Zoning, Chapter IX, Plan Unit Development District pertaining to PUD District Regulations and Guidelines.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Three yes.
Move waiver of the third and adopt in final form.
Second.
Second. Please, please vote.
Aye.
5D, amendment to city code Title IV Health and Safety Regulations, Chapter 5C Solid Waste Control, modification of fees and charges, city initiated, this is an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption, there are no changes from the first reading.
Move consideration.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Aye.
Three yes, norance amending the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, by amending Title IV Health and Safety Regulations, Chapter 5, Article C pertaining to Solid Waste Collection Charges.
Move approval of the second reading.
I, I mean, I'm sorry, second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Three yes.
Move the waiver of the third reading and adoption in final form.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
All right, item six, public hearings, item six A's, the applicant's asking that we withdraw this from the public hearing as they've chosen an option that doesn't require the actual vacation of the public street.
Move withdrawal.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Aye.
Three yes. Item 6B, the council's being asked to move to continue this to the July 15th council agenda.
Move continuation until July 15th.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Three yes. All right, item 6C, the council's being asked to continue this indefinitely, and if there's an agreement reached, we'll bring it back for a public hearing.
Move indefinite continuation.
Second.
Any other questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Aye.
Three yes. 6D, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the issuance of not to exceed $2,935,000 of general obligation corporate purpose and refunding bonds, Series 2019E, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
June 21st, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on item 6D. All right, seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. The resolution to move this forward will be part of item 7C. Item 6E, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the Fiber Conduit Interconnect Project, Green Route, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
June 21st, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on item 6E. All right, seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together, and this is part of Microsoft's new data center.
Move the resolutions in the motion.
Second.
All right, questions or comments? All right, please vote, we got great bids.
Yep.
Aye.
Yeah, that, or we way overestimated what it was gonna cost. Three yes. All right, 6F, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider city entrance enhancements, Phase 1A, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
June 21st, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on item 6F. All right, seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, we have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together, and this involves four, city of West Des Moines signs at some key entrances into the city.
Move the two resolutions in the motion.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Aye.
All right, item seven, new business, 7A, Sammons Financial Group, southwest corner of Mill Civic Parkway and South 81st Street, approval of a preliminary plat and a site plan for office development, Sammons Financial Group LLC. A resolution to approve the preliminary plat and the site plan on the dais tonight before we started was a communication that suggested instead of withholding issuance of the entire building permit, that they, that Sammons be allowed to go ahead and move forward with the footings and foundation permit as a part of their working through some of these easements.
So I'm in support of that, so just so I can understand the motion here, so we want to approve, or make a motion to approve the preliminary plat and site plan?
Yeah, and allowing a footings and foundation permit to move forward, and restrict it to that until the easements and covenants and the related documents have been agreed to.
And then do that during...
Correct. Okay, so if I can summarize, so move approval of the preliminary plat and site plan, which will allow the issuance of a building permit for footings and foundations and underground private utilities, but restrict the full building permit for above-ground construction.
Of the execution of the stormwater management plan and the...
Execution of the stormwater management plan, the sanitary sewer easement.
Right.
That's my motion.
Good. Any questions or comments about that? To me, this, this is a better way to even approach the issue, I mean, to stop someone from pulling any kind of a building permit on a project that massive, because they haven't signed that, that I just think is pretty heavy-handed, so I would encourage us to figure out ways to allow people at least get their project started and not shut the entire thing down.
Agreed.
Okay, please vote.
Aye.
7B, Unity Point Clinic, 4055 West Town Parkway, approval of a site plan for a two-story, 28,000 square foot medical clinic, Central Iowa Hospital Corporation, a resolution to approve the site plan, there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Be a great, great user for that space.
Right.
Been vacant for a while, so it'll be good.
Yeah. Three yes. Item 7C, $12,935,000 of general obligation bonds, Series 2019E, city initiated as a resolution to approve the general obligation refunding loan agreement, combining of loan agreements, setting the date of sale, and approving the preliminary official statement.
Move approval.
Second.
Questions or comments?
I think the mayor talked about this during our lunch with the chamber, but is this cheaper than the sovereign, or closer to the sovereign?
Cheaper.
Cheaper, cheaper than the sovereign, so that's pretty good.
Yeah, I told Tim I liked to read the SMP report, because it said that they believed that West Des Moines could withstand issues better than the sovereign U.S. when it came to crisis, financial crisis, so I'm gonna keep that one.
Good work, Tim.
Yeah, I was gonna send a note to Mr. Mnuchin that we'd be happy to have him come in and visit with us. All right. Three yes. 7D, $15,400,000 of general obligation urban renewal bonds, Series 20... 7D, $15,400,000 of general obligation urban renewal bonds, Series 2019F. City initiated, it's a resolution to approve general obligation loan agreement, setting the date of sale and approving the preliminary official statement.
Move approval.
For a second?
Second.
Should be getting bids on July 15th for our council meeting. Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Three yes.
All right, there are no items for item 8. Receive, file and/or refer item 9, other matters. Are there any other matters that anyone in the council wants to raise?
I just would like to say that I received our fiscal, or budget, and it was sent to us. And I went through that. Tim, that is phenomenal. That budget binder and that notebook is as well put together as I've ever seen anything. So a lot of work goes into that. It's wonderful reading. I know people think numbers are boring, but it is phenomenal information, well organized. I love, love, love the binder. So thank you.
Since Rene brought it up, I was gonna wait until we actually got the placard. But I got a letter the other day from the Government Finance Officers Association saying that our comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ending 2018 also qualifies for the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, which is the highest form of recognition in government accounting and financial reporting. And its attainment represents a significant accomplishment. So it goes to dovetail with what Rene said. These are complicated documents, and I think obviously we've done as good a job as we can to try to allow our average residents to take a look at and understand where the money's going. And so congratulations. I know we'll usually get a plaque when we do a presentation, so congratulations.
One other thing, parades this week, July 3rd, so hopefully get a lot of citizens out for that. I met my candy contact from Piazza, Iowa, in a parking lot in Iowa City, too. I felt like I was doing a drug deal. But the volume of candy that gets thrown out by my boys is significant. So anyway, we'll be loaded and we'll be ready to go.
I'll be with ya.
All right. All right, where's John?